Hello, I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, June 13th. It is 6:00 PM and all commissioners are here this evening with the exception of Commissioners Kiranen, who is absent and excused, and I haven't heard from Roger yet, so he might be joining us here shortly. Mr. Cecil, let's see. Are there any non -- we don't usually take them during study session, but we do have a person in the audience for any non-agenda public comments?
Sure. My name is Eric McIntyre, and I think my original plans for a carriage house are included in the documents you have. I think it's really important that we move forward and try to make some adjustments about our current laws that are in place that really hinder any kind of ADU being built, especially with existing structures. You have conflicting laws, or is it regulations, where you can build a structure in a certain square footage of your own property, but as soon as you want somebody to live in there, then all rules go out the window. I think that's my biggest issue, and the height restrictions. You know, a 20-foot height restriction is nothing nowadays. So I'm hoping you guys take a look at the current laws and make some changes in that and make it a little easier for homeowners to try to make some, a little bit more affordable housing for either our children, whether in college, or, you know, mothers and fathers, the elderly. There's just no options anymore available in Bothell anywhere. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, and thanks for the additional information for the packet. It's a good representation, I think, for -- it's a good example of something we need to look at tonight, and so thank you for joining us. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from March 21st, and if everybody's had a chance to review them, I'll go ahead and take a motion for that.
I move to approve the March 21st meeting minutes as written.
They were the only ones here. Can we second that, even if we weren't here? Is that fine? Second?
I think that's fine, yeah. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Minutes stand approved as written. There's no new business this evening, correct? Is that correct, Dave? All right. And no public hearing this evening. And with that, we will go ahead and move into the study session on potential accessory dwelling unit code amendments, also known as ADUs. We're joined by Michael Katterman, the new Community and Economic Development Director. Well, I guess, kind of new. Dave Boy, the Senior Planner, and Mike Stanger from Arch. So thank you very much for joining us, and I'll go ahead and hand the floor over to Dave at this point.
Thank you. I'm going to try to run this show from down here at the table. I also wanted to acknowledge we are also joined by our newly anointed Development Services Manager, Jeff Smith. So he'll be tasked with overseeing the permitting of all these ADUs once we get the regulations tweaked. So, just to outline this presentation, I'm going to talk a little about the foundation of these code amendments in the Housing Strategy Update and Work Program that Council passed on May 1st. And there's going to, I'm going to go into some detail, not huge depth, on potential carriage house code amendments. As Mr. McIntyre stated, I'm using his proposal as an example, because it has raised some issues there. And then we'll also present some other ADU issues that have come up, both in our conversations among planning staff, issues that they've encountered, and also issues that have come up in a process that's just gotten underway with Arch and all of the Arch cities to kind of get together and compare notes and compare regulations. So, just in terms of the process, of course, many of you were involved in the Housing Strategy Update that is kind of laid out here. I just thought this would be somewhat useful for context, and we're really into the Work Program now. This is really the first step that we've taken since Council adopted the Housing Strategy Update in terms of implementing that and the Work Program. The Housing Strategy Work Program was derived from the Planning Commission's Tier One priorities and the feedback that we got from Council when we presented those. So it wasn't part of what you recommended to Council, but it was derived directly from that. And the highlighted issues are the ones that were, that we are tackling and trying to tackle in 2018. So the ADU, there were a number of ADU issues, and the ones that we addressed in the Work Program were these issues around carriage houses. And when they did adopt the Work Program, we did expand that a little bit and other related, to include other related impediments to creating ADUs that could be tackled this year. And then working with Arch to address other, this highlights financing, but they're really looking at other interjurisdictional issues as well, and Mike will talk a little bit about that later. So, actually, I don't know if James is able to turn down the lights here, so you can see this a little bit better. But this is the McIntyre example. The primary structure here is a house that's on the local historic register, and so it sits, faces the street on the top of this slide, and has an alley on the rear of the slide. And they have built, in addition to the house and the garage here, with the idea of being able to build a living unit on top of the garage. But as Mr. McIntyre said, there are, it's difficult to do under our current regulations. ADUs aren't subject to the 5% lot coverage limit for accessory structures, but they can't be placed in rear setbacks as other accessory structures can. And the 20-foot height limit makes it difficult to add a unit over a garage, especially given that there's also a requirement that accessory structures use similar siding, roofing, and detailing as the primary structure. So that would at least encourage a sloped roof, but again, that's very difficult to do in a 20-foot height limit. So this one's coming up now because of that request and potential application from the McIntyres, but we can also address other emerging issues. Just to go a little bit deeper into that, these are the drawings that they had developed with their architect, and it's a little bit faint, but this is the roof line of the garage as it is now. And as you can see, it would be raised to create that second floor, and it's probably about five feet above the allowed height limit. And we can come back to these slides during the discussion. We do get other, we have had some other examples of applicants or prospective applicants wanting to do carriage houses, and this is one that came in actually just this past week since I put together the packet. This is a homeowner that would like to build a wholly new carriage house with a new two-car garage and a living unit above. So it raises the question of whether the garage itself should be subject to the 5% lot coverage limit even though the ADU is not. So that's something that we could use some clarification in the code. And again, the code says that the height limit for carriage houses is 20 feet or the height of the primary structure, whichever is less, which makes it virtually impossible to do a two-level ADU on a single-level house. Is that a necessary limitation? I think the thinking was at the time that if you've got a single-level house, if the accessory building is going to be in character with that, it should also be a single level. But I think that's certainly worth examining. The implication would be that they would have to put the accessory unit into the back, as shown here, in the green box. And once you add a driveway to the garage and a walkway to the accessory unit, then you're probably likely going to be pushing close, I haven't actually done a calculation based on this sketch, but you're going to be close to the 35% building coverage and the 45% hard service coverage limits. So those are other issues that were raised in our staff discussion that we probably need to look at those provisions. And then the other thing that came up is that it would make sense to consolidate all the staff provisions.
What was in the staff report, but mostly I wanted to reserve, yeah, most of this evening for an opportunity to hear from Council what their concerns and questions are about how development has been proceeding downtown, and have a conversation about that and how we can address any concerns and issues, help you better understand how we've been dealing with issues as they have arisen. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move into the presentation.
And then other issues that have come up, the use of manufactured or modular home and potential use of pre-approved plans. Some jurisdictions do have pre-approved plans, so it's, if you've got a site that where one of those pre-approved plans will work, it's a very simple process. It's basically an over-the-counter permit. So that's something that has been identified as something that we may want to look into. Some of those pre-approved plans, there are companies starting to make modular pre-built homes that you can just move in and set down onto the foundation. And so we need to do some additional analysis of how that works with our current rules for manufactured homes. I believe that their definitions are, there's a different definition for modular homes, but we need to do some more research into that. Manufactured homes have very specific dimensional requirements. Type A manufactured homes, the kind that we allow in all single-family zones throughout the city, are defined as having two parallel minimum 12-by-36-foot sections. So in theory, you could stack two of those on top of each other, and they'd still be parallel, but it's more than 800 square feet, which is our limit for accessory dwelling units. So that's not going to work for accessory units as the code is now. There's a type B manufactured home, but those are only allowed in existing mobile home park overlays, and those are the older, smaller, single wides, minimum eight feet by 40 feet. So that would qualify, or could qualify as a accessory dwelling unit under our size limitations, but again, would only be allowed in a mobile home park. And then another issue that's come up are impact fees and utility hookups. And again, we need to do some more research in this area. We do currently charge impact fees, other than school impact fees, for accessory dwelling units, and other jurisdictions do not. So we need to look into the legal issues around that, and, but that is, the fees are substantial, around $3,500 per unit. So I think the jurisdictions that are not charging them are basically taking the approach that the impact fee is being paid or has been paid by the primary unit and doesn't need to apply to the accessory unit. So that's something that we're going to be looking at and discussing with the other jurisdictions to understand how they're addressing that. Which brings us to the Arch process that I included in your attachment three, and I just thought I'd give Mike Stanger a minute here to talk about that and what they're trying to accomplish there.
Good evening. Dave already kind of explained the basic idea, but as a regional coalition of cities on the east side, one of the reasons, primary reasons Arch exists is to share information, share workload, share staff expertise in the area of housing that individual cities themselves often don't have. And this ADU effort is a great example of where we can add value to Bothell and all the cities who are suddenly interested in, eager to promote new ADUs in their communities. So what we kicked off a month ago was a staff-level project where we are pursuing ways to improve the situation for homeowners, and looking at it in four different ways. One is to understand and study the regulations or, you know, what a homeowner can do on their property. Second is related, but slightly apart from that, is permitting processes and fees. So as a homeowner, what do I have to do to get it approved? And then third is public information or outreach. How can we make it, the information more readily available, accessible, understandable for a layperson, maybe who hasn't done construction before, hasn't rented a home in their backyard or out of their house before, things of that nature? So make it easier to get into that activity at their own house. And then finally, some kind of financial tools. We don't know exactly what form this is going to take yet, but we do know that it's often difficult for homeowners to figure out how to pay for an ADU. It's not the kind of thing that you can usually get a conventional mortgage or a home equity loan for, but we want to talk to bankers and as well as other cities who have tried various ways to, you know, maybe down payment assistance or other means to help alleviate the out-of-pocket, immediate out-of-pocket costs that a homeowner would experience when trying to create an So we have various, people from cities are kind of splitting up the workload here. We've done a lot in the way of already gathering what the, and comparing the regulations that cities have. That's what Dave included in the packet, and we're still building on that and looking to other examples. Other cities like Portland and Vancouver, BC, and places in California have been really aggressive about this kind of thing. So we'll build on that as we go and be happy to share that with you if the city decides to come back, you know, sometime in the near future with other things that you want to pursue besides the immediate concerns. I would like to reinforce the last couple of issues that Dave mentioned, impact fee waivers and utility hookups. Thank you. Because we have found that those are major obstacles for homeowners to be able to pay for these. And in fact, we were looking at an ADU expert down in the Portland area today who's done a report analyzing the big jump that they've achieved in ADUs in the City of Portland. And he concluded that the change that the city made there that had the biggest impact on the growth of ADUs was eliminating the cost of utility hookups. So we don't know for sure how that's playing out in Bothell right now, because you do have three water utilities, but if there's something that we can do quickly that could work into this part of your process, we'd be happy to support that. But that, you know, that depends on what path you want to take.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, just this one other slide. One thing that I failed to mention, and I thought I meant to have a slide in here about it, but when we did the ADU updates in 2015, we had allowed accessory dwelling units, not detached, but attached accessory dwelling units for several years, and, but the size limits were pretty restrictive. There were a number of pretty restrictive provisions in the code, and we actually had only permitted two, a grand total of two. We are certain that there were more that have been created that people did just without permits. But since then, we haven't had a flood. We thought we were significantly removing impediments and by allowing detached units that we would be getting a significant number. And we have been getting about a half a dozen a year since the code was changed. But the Arch Work Group has talked about, one thing that's come up is potentially setting some goals, like 2% of all existing single-family homes, up to 5%. I think Mercer Island was...
Kirkland's shooting for 5%.
Kirkland's shooting for 5%.
Mercer Island has 3%.
Yeah. So, and that's something that we'll be discussing through that process, and the recommendations that come out of that, we're, there will be some recommendations that'll come out of that that will be most likely put onto our 2019 docket. So tonight, what we wanted, welcome questions for staff, any additional public testimony if desired, and then direction to staff. And I've outlined three different possibilities. There are others that the Commission could choose to go in. So one direction would be to go ahead and then prepare code amendments to consolidate the ADU provisions, which we've already kind of shown how that could look, and address impediments to carriage house units and to bring back to you with, on July 11th. And then potentially, we could also bring back draft findings for potential action on July 11th to wrap this up before the August break, and then be able to take it back to Council in September or in the fall. Another option, and maybe we can do a mix of this, is a direction that we'd like, is any additional analysis and/or additional draft code amendments that you'd like us to develop and bring back to you on July 11th. And we can do some initial analysis and maybe some draft code amendments, and the decision can be made on July 11th about which ones you feel are ready and will recommend, which ones we think really could use some more analysis, and maybe it would be best to benefit from the Arch analysis that's going on this year and save for the 2019 docket. So at that, I'd like to open it up for questions and get your direction for July 11th.
Great, thanks, Dave. So this is a study session, so this is a very different feel than other meetings. So this is, I guess, I think if it's okay, I'm just going to open up just kind of general comments from the Commission, anybody who wants to ask a question that they're just like, oh, I really want to figure this out beginning of the meeting. And then we'll kind of maybe work our way through some of the packet that Dave provided, especially I think focusing on the, I like the Arch comparisons between cities and where we're at compared to them. So with that, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Arch or Dave?
And I do have the packet available to put up on the screen, too, if you want to reference that.
Okay, great.
Just have a terminology question. What is floor area? Is that square foot of the unit total, including second floor, or just what's on the first-floor surface area? I wasn't sure.
Floor area includes all living levels. First, the ground level, we talk about the footprint of the building as the ground level coverage.
And so in reading that with the, you know, that you can go more than 800 square feet, up to, is it 49%? I mean, if it's a single floor, I didn't understand the logic of that provision. I just wasn't grabbing that.
So the size limit, and I realize some of you went through that process, I think, before and others didn't, but, so the size is limited to 40% of the total square area of the primary unit and the ADU. So if you have a 1,000-square-foot house, you can have an ADU up to, hold on, 1,200-square-foot house, you can have an ADU up to 800 square feet. And 800 square feet is the absolute cap. So if you have a 2,400-square-foot house, you can't do a 1,600-square-foot ADU. And the reason for that is that this is part of our affordable housing strategy. So we wanted to keep these as small units. They're intended, they're not intended really to be, you know, family homes, but they are intentionally meant to be small and affordable.
Have you looked at whether we care, whether they just become further stock of Airbnb and BRBO properties for, you know, essentially hotels and income opportunities for people? So the staying in your home argument works, aging in place probably works, but it's not increasing, it's not affordable homes, and so I'm wondering whether that's been looked at by the staff or other jurisdictions?
Yeah. It could be an affordable strategy for the homeowner to be able to make their payments and use that income, but that is, that's a great question, and that's a whole, well, it is related, but it is another issue that we have on our list. It's not on the docket for this year, but we've identified short-term rentals as an issue that our code doesn't address right now. The code really doesn't make a distinction between a long-term rental and a short-term rental. But we do have a special use category for lodging, and short-term rentals, Airbnbs probably should be fit under that lodging use category, but we, the code really doesn't, didn't anticipate that, and we haven't made those changes. So that is something that we're going to have to address, not just for accessory dwelling units, but for, you know, houses in general.
Right. Yeah, just curious, because depending on where this discussion goes, and I don't have an opinion yet on a lot of these things, but, you know, whether we're more permissive for certain, if we're trying to, you know, from our housing strategy discussion that we just finished, if we're trying to increase housing stock and longer-term living, you know, do we, are we more permissive on the permits, you know, on that side to permit things, that's double use of permit, versus, like, you could use a carriage house if it's kind of a longer-term situation, but you couldn't use it for, it's a, you know, a non-conforming use if you use it as a short-term rental. And again, I don't have a value judgment either way, but just curious whether that, because there's, we're going to get more specific, and I'm sure we're not going to get the sum total of all the different configurations of ideas, you know, of like streets that don't have an alley behind them, but don't, it has a street behind them, whether that, you know, do we have to think about that? Because there are certain blocks, maybe not in Bothell, but, you know, some friends in Seattle had a block where it was just all single lots, and it was a busy street behind them on the backside, and you wouldn't care if there was... And you wouldn't care if there was anything in the the rear yard setback there because the rear yard is is a street, is a thoroughfare, so.
Right.
But I'm just still thinking about that, and and again, what other jurisdictions are doing as we? My only concern is we kind of do something piecemeal now. I mean, it's helped, if we, I think if there's testing here where we, because we only have, what, two under the old, and we now have a half dozen a year, that you make incremental changes and see what happens. I mean, that's a, and I think as we talked about in the January meeting, when we we made, you know, talked about the letter for more resources for you guys, that there's this housing boom happening. And what are we doing to address, you know, for our numbers that we need to have people here, especially on the Snoomish County side, because we're behind? What are we doing for the long term housing? So I'll stop there.
Some good points. Anybody else?
Just a quick question. What's the max building height? It's typically in Bothell, 30?
For single family homes, it's 30 feet. There are certain circumstances where you can go up to 35 feet. If typically in in the middle of a subdivision where you're not abutting an existing property that that was developed under the other, the lower height limit, we do allow the 35 foot height. But the the base height limit is 30 feet in single family. And that's, that's to the peak of the the roof in in single family situations.
Gotcha. The the 20 foot for an ADU carriage house application seems a little bit restrictive, kind of when comparing the two. But also, just from a design standard standpoint, if we're looking at a Rambler, a one level house with a two story garage behind it, that's, that ever brought up any issues? Or, I mean, the house could obviously be raised to level, someone could add on the house if they stayed below the 30 feet. So shouldn't be a problem, but just curious.
It it's, I think it was seen as a neighborhood character issue. And you probably find there'll be some subdivisions with covenants that that don't allow two two level structures. I'm not, I don't know that for sure, but I know of some in in Seattle that are done that way to preserve views. In fact, they even have covenants that you can't let your trees grow more than 15 feet tall. But so those would still be enforced outside of our rules. But it's a, it's a valid question, and and I think it's something that planning commission will have to grapple with, whether they wanna allow the taller heights in very limited situations or just say, you know, let's just raise the height limit to a reasonable height for two level structures, similar to what Redman has done. They allow 25 feet in any case, and up to 28 feet for a carriage house situation.
Okay. Just editorial comment. I think when we were going through the housing plan and looking for affordable housing opportunities, we were pretty limited with what we could find as far as injecting that opportunity within Bothell. There's not a silver bullet. And kind of redefining the ADU component was one step in the right direction. It's, I guess it's a little surprising that we've only had, you know, half a dozen applicants per year, but maybe it's still a little bit of a new thing. And there's, like you said, there's probably some that are unpermitted. So I'm open to, you know, trying to find more ways to approach it. But I I thought Commissioner Wefar had some good points with regards to rentals, because we we just wanna balance that out and make sure the intended use is met as much as we can without having people out there patrolling carriage houses looking for short term renters or something, so.
Okay. Maybe while the commissioners think about any other questions they have before you go through it. Mike, just a question, just a general question for you, and this might be a little bit of a, I don't know if you can answer it. But do you know, so you, I really, I really enjoyed the the spreadsheet, or I guess you should say pages you put together with comparisons of city to city. Do you see, and in in your mind, is there a particular city that is doing this well? That can kind of differentiate themselves from the other cities on the east side with regards to, you call it day dues and ADUs? So the, yeah.
I don't call them day dues, I just stick to ADUs.
ADUs, okay.
Detached ADUs.
Detached ADUs, okay.
But anyway, we hold up Mercer Island as being the most successful because they have had over three, I forget their their actual total, but they've had over three ADUs per thousand detached, single family homes. For some time, they had a big growth of them. I think it was about 15 years ago when they they changed some regulations, they really promoted it a lot. And they also gave some clemency to to homeowners who already had them in place but hadn't been permitted. So they haven't had a lot of growth in them since then, but they've continued to to add some as time's gone on. There's some, you know, it's not really clear or certain why they've had so many more, though. Is it because the lots are bigger? Is it because the the residents have a lot more money to be able to invest in it? There could be some other reasons, but we do believe that most of them are attached or, you know, integrated with the homes. They're, they don't have a a great number of detached ADUs. So a lot of them are, you know, built into daylight basements or or, you know, whatever they have available additions, maybe. But that's, that's about all we know on Mercer Island.
Yes, good guidance from you. I'm kind of looking at parsing parts apart from, you know, different aspects of this and looking at the cities and who's doing what.
To add on that, one one thing that I thought, found interesting in our first meeting with the other cities, with the other Arch cities, was the representative from Mercer Island said that it's evolved that most of the new construction, new single family construction in Mercer Island is built with ADUs already incorporated. So that's another thing that that there's been some talk about, how can we encourage more of that? And and again, there, that may be a factor of the the average single family home in Mercer Island is probably bigger than than what you see in Bothell. And 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 they have more more room to 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 do that sort of thing.
And on that, on that, with that regard, regards to that, this may be kind of a different corner, just something I'm trying to wrap my mind around. For tax purposes, what what does that do to the valuation of a house generally? It's, I mean, I would assume it makes the value go up, but there's no, obviously no requirement for the person to rent out the ADU. They just have it there, available, is de rented if they want to.
That's something we plan to explore. I've only gotten to the point of identifying the person at the assessor's office to call, but we haven't reached out to them yet. So we don't know if 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 they treat that differently than the rest of the house or.
Okay. Thanks.
The other thing I don't know about Mercer Island, it'd be worth a follow up, is whether they're typically building a fully operational ADU or if they're just providing all of the plumbing and wiring so that it can be established if the if the homeowner chooses to, in which case the the increase in valuation would probably not happen until they actually did install the ADU.
Okay.
So I have a comment and then a couple of questions. So my first comment is, if if we truly do want to increase the number of ADUs by easing the regulations, it makes sense to me to relax the height restriction and go up closer to what the existing height restriction would be for the for the house that's there now, rather than build and, you know, increase the lot coverage, more impervious surface. And then I do have two questions. We talked about impact fees. What what are the impact fees that we pay in Bothell? Is it school, traffic, parks? Are there others or?
For ADUs, they don't charge the school impact fee, but they do charge the traffic and park.
So just the two? And we're looking at about 3,500. Is that a flat rate or is it based on?
No, it's based, I believe it's based on the size of the the unit.
Okay, thanks. And then, you know, we talked about the Mercer Island example, and they have the the 3%. You talked about the clemency program. Do we have a good sense of how many Bothell, how many ADUs there may be in Bothell that are off the books?
We don't. We have had, well, when when we did legalize the detached ADUs and and changed some of the regulations to be less restrictive, we did establish a two year clemency period. And we have had, again, I think just a couple of folks have come in and and had those legalized. And there were some issues with that, too, at least in terms from our our building division. They were not particularly comfortable with, basically what it said was that they would go and inspect them and and attest that they were built to code, which is hard to do after the fact. So it was a, it was an awkward situation for them. So we may, that's another issue that we may look at revisiting and and see if there's a way to to extend the clemency period in a way that that works for our our building division.
During the clemency period, did they also, were they assessed impact fees if they wanted to bring them up?
I believe so, yeah.
So that would be another reason somebody wouldn't have called?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for now, thanks.
I I have a whole bunch of questions, but I'll try to keep them brief. I just wanna echo something Commissioner Hampton said, which is specifically thinking about this carriage house example and other examples. You know, if they were to tear that house down, the the existing structure today, and rebuild a two story house there, the the overall height of that house would change, right? Like, so 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 I agree that the the, we should, it's my first day. We should, we should definitely loosen the height requirements because I I just, I I think we should be supporting ADUs in in the city. And and, you know, if if that's the biggest impediment, I think we should loosen that. And then impact fees are something that I struggle with because if they don't, if we don't charge impact fees, the the residents of Bothell bore the cost of of those. So I'd like to see us charge them. But then the other side of that coin is by charging them, it would slow the the possible ADU growth in our city. So it's it's a little bit of a toss up. I would be interested if like a moratorium could be possible to encourage ADUs to be built in a certain time and and waive those those impact fees. I mean, ultimately, we should be charging impact fees because they will impact our community. But we also need to encourage more housing stock in our city. So let's put a couple of year moratorium in. Oh, yes. And then the last point that I had, and this may be unpopular. I'm not married to the idea of similar style. And I don't know how the rest of the community feels or the rest of the commissioners feel about this, but it is something I'd like to understand more about. You know, if if there was a, say, a modern designed ADU built in an existing neighborhood like that, is that frowned upon by our residents? I don't know how to really approach that, but it was something I was thinking. I recently had an Airbnb experience in Montana in an ADU that was modern in an older neighborhood. And, yeah, it didn't look like the other houses, but it was, it was nice to have a nice, large, modern house in a, in a neighborhood that was full of 700, 800 square foot houses, so.
Aaron and I just, I realized, maybe they'll do this at the end. This is, I I should have introduced you at the beginning of the meeting, because I think this is your first meeting. We'll do that later on. But so can you, so can you touch on that that moratorium idea again? I I think, just kind of really briefly.
I think the ultimate goal of this discussion tonight and building ADUs in Bothell is increasing our housing stock and and allowing more affordable housing into our community. So, and right now is a really hot time to do that. Maybe we should have a moratorium for impact fees for a period of time to encourage ADUs to be built during that period of time. It is an internal concern, though, because those ADUs that are built will all impact our overall neighborhoods. So I'm not, I'm not sure how I weigh on this yet, but I I feel like I.
Interesting idea.
I wanna support ADUs and affordable housing more than assessing an impact fee.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that, Dave.
I realize I didn't respond to a few of the questions you'd asked of us my first time around. I'm in favor, even if we did nothing to the code, I'm in favor of a separate spot. Because I tried to find all the ADU revision, you know, and I'm an attorney, and it took me a long time to find everything. So so I would consolidate them to make it more readable for folks, because it's gonna be the homeowners that are gonna be looking for this, not professional developers. I also am in favor of relaxing the height restrictions. We built a detached garage five, six years ago before the ADD regulations. And and we used to have a shed roof house from 1950s, and it used to be single story. And then our prior owners, 17 years ago, did a full remodel and just put a pitch drift on. And so it went from probably 11 feet to 17.8 or whatever. And so we have a garage that's 17.8 feet tall. And and so having some, and we have some interesting ceiling heights in the second floor, just, you know, with dormers and things like that. And and it would have been great to have another couple feet. That's a separate issue just on garages, whether, you know, accessory buildings, whether we just go up to, for example, 20, if we're already doing that. And maybe that's what it is now. But but having a relaxed height on carriage houses makes sense to me because if you have a single floor house, it is a very expensive remodel to put a second floor on that house. It's a very, it's a different proposition to make an extra living space, even for the family. You know, as the family grows, you know, a a grandparent, you know, needs to have more care. It's a, it's a much different proposition to put a second floor on a garage and to, you know, from a cost perspective. So so I'm in favor of that. And I'm also in favor of the kind of the the different situations. We've talked about the rear setback, as long as, you know, not allowing it where there is a backyard. I think we need to respect that. I think on the issue of just my knowledge of the code on similar kind of look and feel of the main house, I think that's something that's in the code in lots of places. I know from the Red Barn Special District, when the Safeway project went in seven, eight years ago, it had to have like a barn-like, you know, just because at the time, people thought that was kind of, I guess, a nice design feature, arguably. I mean, it is, it isn't. And so I I I could, I could relax on that as well because I think, as, you know, if you have a a monoculture of cookie cutter homes, that, to me, that's less interesting, I grew up in Seattle, than a mix of things. And as, and things become more dense here, things are naturally just gonna look different. And 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 so having a different look and feel on an accessory building, I think if we, on our garage, we were gonna do something a little bit more in character of the original house with a shed roof. But we ended up doing something that kind of mirrors the main house exactly. So we ended up conforming versus doing something different when we designed our garage. So I'm I'm also open to relaxing that requirement because you 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 lose, you could lose, for example, passive solar. You could, I mean, there's all these things you would do now that might be energy efficient things that you might do that that wouldn't go with an old house. I had one more point I was gonna make. I think unless it comes up, I'll, um, chime back in.
I, I could give a little background on the, the, um, uh, similar design and detailing. Uh, in two thousand ten or two thousand eleven, we did a, a code amendment to our restrictions on accessory buildings. It was the, uh, result of, uh, some, uh, concerns that came up in the community uh, of people that were building very industrial style metal buildings as, as accessory buildings, uh, garages. And, and so it was a question about the style and the scale of those. And we had a pretty, uh, interesting discussion about that. We have examples here in Bothell of, uh, accessory buildings that are not, uh, a similar style or, or, um, and, and we tried to make it leave some room for some differences and some interpretation on the part of the reviewers. But just down on West Riverside Drive, uh, there's a, a craftsman style house up on the hill with a very barn-like accessory structure. It works, works perfectly well and everybody agreed, well, that works fine. But, uh, they were still concerned about the, uh, the, the metal buildings. And, uh, and there was debate about whether we just say no, no metal accessory structures. And well, uh, some people are building metal sided primary structures. So, um, uh, that's, that's how that, uh, language evolved. But, uh, it is certainly something we can, when, take another look at.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I throw something into the mix here? Because, uh, all of you have touched upon the height, um, issue. And I'm hearing general favorability toward relaxing those height restrictions. Commissioner Wickwire touched on something that I think is important to consider when we do that, which is the, the setback issue. We really can't separate those because there are privacy issues that have come up in the past. Uh, so the height and the setback from, from the primary structure, from the rear yard property line, whether there's an alley or not an alley, those are all factors that, that we have to consider as we're looking at the regulations. So as you're thinking about relaxing the height, if you could also think about it in those different contexts, if you have any particular, um, direction or, or, uh, concerns or questions you want to raise relative to that, that would be helpful.
And a little context on that note, uh, the, the current code does allow accessory structures in the rear yard setback up to, uh, within five feet of the rear property line. But they're limited to a height of ten feet at that five-foot setback. That increases by a foot with each additional foot setback. So you, you're going to be fifteen feet back before you can get a full second story, so.
If I understood the proposal that in, in situations where you had alleys, because you already have that ingress egress of the parking from the alley, that in those situations that that's where the, I, for me, that's where I would, um, allow it. I, I guess I would keep the same height restrictions where there is a backyard. Because we don't want accessory buildings, uh, overlooking other people's backyards, uh, that are living units, in my opinion. So that would be, that would be something where I would.
And, and understand, my understanding, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there aren't very many places in the city that have alleys. So that would be a very limited area where we would have that additional height allowed beyond what we currently do with the, with the staggered setback.
Yeah, we, we haven't done an exhaustive analysis, but we think that lower Maywood is probably the, uh, the, the only, or the, the main, if not the only, uh, area that, that does have alleys.
Yeah. And so Michael on that, uh, I mean, maybe it's something we want to think about. Um, it, I can't remember what Commissioner cited earlier. It might have been Commissioner Wickwire. There's so many as every, so many things that we've studied, um, there's always unseen things that come up. And there's so many different, uh, I, well, I guess you just, the fact that you limited the alleys to mostly lower Maywood, um, is probably correct. Um, I'm used to seeing them because that's the neighborhood I walk around with, walk around most, but, uh, because it's near my house. But, um, yeah, so I guess, you know, what is your, I mean, you, you came from Bellevue. So what, um, Michael, so director's interpretation, um, how, how often is that a, is that good to be used? How often is that beneficial to be used versus not beneficial? I know you try to, you want it in the code be a lot, you know, be, be pretty clear about it. And the director's interpretation should probably be used less frequently than more frequently.
Sparingly is the word that I would say, yes. Uh, we would like, we, we would like the clear direction in the code for a couple of reasons. One is because we want the, the applicants to have very clear direction as to what is and isn't allowed. Um, and when we do have to make interpretations, we have to think about it in the context of not only that particular situation, but how would that apply elsewhere? Because it, it is a precedent, uh, in many respects. So we have to think about how it might be applied in more than just that one situation. And we don't want to essentially create a new, um, uh, a new aspect of the code that would apply citywide. You know, when, when there should be, it should be an exception. That's why I say sparingly is when you look at that.
Okay.
And again, you know, we can write the code in, in ways that address different situations. Uh, that's often the case with codes you have to look at, you know, and that may be why we have the additional one foot setback for every, um, additional foot in height that the building can go. And that may be adequate, you know, and we can, and that'll be part of the analysis that, uh, that we do on that. But I just wanted to raise that question because we are dealing with different situations in different parts of the city. Keeping in mind, if we just apply it to those areas with alleys and we're also trying to encourage more ADUs throughout the city, we're going to have a limited effect in that particular instance.
Okay. Raise your hand.
The height restriction for ADUs over a garage, is that only for detached garages? If somebody has a home with an attached garage, can they go over the garage and not have to worry about the height restriction versus the, the primary structure?
Uh, that's correct. Uh, they, they'd be limited to the, the thirty foot for the primary house.
Right, okay.
So it's not just for, it's not only for carriage houses. It, it would also apply to a, a two-level ADU. Say you wanted to do, uh, stack, I mean, two, two four and square foot.
But it, so, so if a ha, if a, if a house is in a neighborhood that has a thirty foot height restriction and it's currently single story, you wanted to put a second story ADU on there, you would have the thirty foot or you would have the twenty foot?
If it's, if it was part of the primary structure, it would be, it could go up to thirty.
Up to thirty, okay. So we're, we're really only talking about increasing height for a really, a very small number of homes versus the entire housing stock in Bothell?
Yeah. It is a limited set.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, good question. Cause I, I thought I read something in here about, do you allow it to go higher than the rest of the residents, the ADU? But, I don't know, but apparently we do, so.
If it's, if it's correct, the, the comparison chart says that in Kirkland, they do allow it to go fifteen feet taller. But, um, that's one that I want to double check on, so.
Oh, so.
And you may be referring to the, the section about it limits the height to a, a certain height or less, whatever the, the primary structure is in that case. So if the existing structure is a one-story, then you probably would be precluded from building a two-story.
Right, so, cause you were asking, was that?
If it's a, correct, yeah. We're talking about a detached situation.
And I think that's just barring from the accessory units, right? Cause that's, that's what applies to accessory dwellings, not, sorry, accessory buildings, not accessory dwellings. That's where that, whichever is less, because you can't be, you can never be taller than the, the primary structure with an, with a accessory building in our code.
Correct. Detached or attached?
No, detached. Any detached accessory building can't be taller than the primary building in our code.
Whether it's an accessory dwelling unit or not.
Unless it's a, you know, non-conforming, in fact, if it, it was, if it was built, like I have a barn from nineteen fifty-three that's taller than the main house. And it's legal because it's, it's been there for sixty years or whatever, so sixty-five years.
Okay. Cause I was looking at attachment three, page three, and, and that might have been just, um, and this, this is the arch compilation. And it says same as primary unit or twen, or twenty feet, whichever's less. But that must mean if it's detached. Cause it's the second, under height limits for Bothell, it's the same as primary or whichever, you know, whichever, so. So we're saying though, within our code, you can, it's, it sounds like we're saying you can go up higher than the single story if it's attached.
Yeah, it's the same as, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good clarification. Thank you.
I think in general, people don't do things with attached. It's the big issue is detached. So that's, um, it was really, like, when we looked at building a garage, it would have been really hard to attach it in some way to our house because it wasn't built with it. So when you're kind of doing things after the fact, so we're really kind of focusing on detached.
Cause, and not to dwell on this one particular point, but can you go back in the slides, Dave? Um, you had that one where you'd have a special driveway and add to this, uh, impervious cover. Uh, not the McIntyre one, that one. Cause I feel, I feel like that is the one that would, that would, the garage would be, uh, it sounded like the applicant wanted the garage to be taller than the rest of the structure.
That was just a standalone, wasn't it? Not a garage underneath.
That's right. The, the applicant would like to do, or the, the potential applicant would like to, uh, be able to do a carriage house.
Carriage house, sorry, yeah.
Uh, so a garage with a, an ADU, uh, on top of it, uh, detached.
Oh, detached, I'm sorry, okay.
So he, he would like to build, uh, two levels where the blue rectangle is.
Okay.
The current code would, would, uh, basically say to, to do that, he would need to keep it all on one level. So he'd basically have to put the, uh, ADU on the ground level.
Okay.
Like that or in some other configuration.
Okay.
And so, uh, the, by increasing the height limit, we, in this kit situation, we would effectively decrease the, the building footprint and impervious surface coverage. So, so there's all, there's that trade-off to consider as well.
Would it necessarily? You may have the same footprint. You just have more square footage.
Well, uh, to do what he wants to do, uh, roughly five hundred square foot ADU above a, a five hundred square foot garage, if you put that five hundred square feet on the ground level instead of on top of the garage, you're going to increase your coverage by five hundred square feet.
In addition to the garage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I realize I misworded the first comment I made earlier, so I'm going to ask just a very direct question. Could this potential applicant and the other potential applicant, could they raise their house to, to stories? Would that be permitted?
Uh, yes, uh, provided there aren't any covenants that would restrict that. But from our perspective, yes.
So we're basically trying to restrict the carriage house, but we would permit them, like, as it stands right now, the code is, we wouldn't permit the carriage house to be two-story, but we would permit their primary residents to be two-story.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Potentially even three, if you could.
Yeah, so.
Just to further complicate that, if, once they add it on to the house, then they could increase the height and carriage.
Yeah, I mean.
Not, not beyond twenty feet.
Right.
It definitely feels like most of us are in agreement that the twenty foot seems very arbitrary. Especially when you take into consideration a comment like they could raise their house, two, two-story house or three-story house. And then go back and do it anyway. It just seems very arbitrary.
Um, so you're looking for us to kind of not wrap this up, but to come back in our July meeting with findings on July eighteenth, right? Potentially?
I'm asking for direction on whether you would like, uh, me, based on the input you've given, uh, tonight, to try to come back on July eleventh with a package that, that you could actually act on, that, that was ready for that. Or, uh, if you feel like, and, and that would really mean limiting it to kind of these, some of these, uh, core, uh, impediments for, for carriage houses, uh, and, and the, the reorganization of the code. If you're feeling like you, you want to go beyond that, um, then, um, it's, it'll probably be difficult to do that in, in, in that timeframe. And in any case, I can bring back, um, proposed code amendments. I can bring back draft findings and, and then also some initial, additional analysis on some of these issues. And, uh, on the eleventh, you can decide whether that's something that really should benefit from the arch study that's going on through the rest of this year and, and be added, uh, to the twenty nineteen docket or something that you want to try to tackle this year.
Okay, um, so on our draft planning commission schedule, we show the eleventh as downtown code amendments and the eighteenth as ADUs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if, if.
I had those backwards.
Seems like if we could get even just, I don't know if you could get it ready by the eleventh, but if we could get some of your language and any additional information people want by the eleventh, then on the eighteenth during the public hearing, we would potentially have a good chance at closing it. But I don't know if we can do it all in one meeting.
One week turnaround is tough, um, so, uh, on the same topic.
Okay.
So I, I apologize for, I had those dates reversed, uh, so it would be the eighteenth, not the eleventh.
I feel like this would not, I, I'm very much in favor of ADUs. I, I think it would be tough to get done in one meeting. I mean, the first meeting for, for Roger and Kevin to weigh in too. But I don't know if there's any way of doing the, I mean, you, you could do the eleventh, it's the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. I know it's a reserved, you know, try to get it in two meetings. I don't know. It does seem like we still have a lot of stuff to talk about with regards to this. It is kind of a big code change. It's going to be a positive one, I think, but I just want to kind of feel like, I don't know, what are the commissioners thinking? Do you think we'll be able to get this done in, in, in one meeting? I mean, I know that we've had other topics where we've had six, eight meetings on.
I think if we're talking about carriage houses and reorganizing the code and possibly, um, doing a more, you know, a moratorium on impacts, I think it's, you could take a shot at it. Um, that's, I mean, we've already got, I mean, I think that's doable. And if we don't, then we'll get to the meeting and see whether it.
And then we can just continue the meeting for you to?
Yeah, we think about it more and more issues come up for Roger. Or, you know, if there's more comments, so.
I would agree with that. One, one other thing I would like to add to the agenda is a conversation about this past two-year clemency program that wasn't super effective. I, I think one of the reasons we'd really want to try to bring those into, you know, into the fold is we want these to be safe units as well. And if people did some improvements before and they weren't signed up by the city, it would be good to ma, maybe waive the impact fees for these ones that would be, you know, past units that were developed. So we could get a chance to look at the, uh, the electrical and, and situations and safety in there. But that's a conversation we would have at the next meeting if, if the commissioners are willing.
One reason why we may not have had, uh, a lot of folks come in, uh, under that program is, that we just didn't do a lot of outreach, uh, around that when, when we changed the code. Uh, and that's one thing that, uh, Arch is looking at in their, their analysis is what can we do in terms of public education and outreach to, to promote, uh, ADUs in general?
Just one last thing, um, as far as the design standards, I think I'm in the minority, but I kind of like to hold to matching the main residence, um, with whatever ADUs put in place. I don't want to limit the ability for modular homes because I think that would be a good alternative, um, for homeowners. But I, I do think there's something to be said for neighborhood character and trying to maintain it.
Yeah, I don't think you're necessarily leaning on that. I think I would be, as, as much as I appreciate certain things like passive solar and, and things along those lines, um, yeah, I know there's, there, it's good that there's disagreement here. But that's why we're here to discuss it. But yeah, I think there's something to be said for, uh, continuance of the, of the design within, within the same yard. But I don't know, yeah, we can discuss that further.
I'll just comment real quick and say, I too feel that we'll be able to turn this around relatively quickly. Um, and then specifically on the design standards, I, I'm not going to hold fast to a disagree with it. Especially when you brought up aluminum, it, it kind of opened my eyes that there could be some unique elements used. So I think, um, as long as we, I'm okay not touching it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the, that, that, that section either. And I'm, I guess I'm, uh, opposite of Pat, Commissioner Cave with, uh, I prefer not to do modular homes for whatever reason, for the accessory dwelling units. Uh, but I am interested in pre-approved plans. Um, so I think there's, if we get this done, I hope it's something that comes back on our docket pretty soon with, with a lot more meat to get into these more complex issues. Because I think it's, this is, seems like a fix for Maywood, uh, and make it easier. and make it easier for people to find regulations. But there's a lot more issues that we could dive into to try to promote, you know, again, increased housing stock, you know, if we think about UDeb Bothell and student housing, and, and I think we all, you know, being in the suburbs versus being in the city, people's sense of space is reducing in the city substantially if what is, you know, enough space for someone. And, and there's obviously a tiny home movement. We talked about it in one of the past meetings. And so, there's, there's lots of innovative things. And, and I think we should stay on this one for the next, you know, couple of years versus, oh, we've touched it again and we don't have to touch it again for three to five years. That's, that would not be my intention with these changes.
So, I'll add one more thing and echo what Commissioner Wickwire said. You know, we are recognizing that this is really mostly geared toward Maywood because that's where the alleys and the carriage house opportunities are. But we have a lot of new development and growth happening in the city, particularly in Snohomish County. And if a developer could look at these standards and alley construction with the possibility of ADUs, like you said, other communities are, are building new housing stock that supports this type of growth. Perhaps we'd get some, some better growth out there and, or better, better developments that allowed for more affordable housing is what I meant by better growth.
Okay, so I think I'm, oh, hold that thought one second, Aaron. So, so if I'm following the rest of the commission, you guys are thinking that we'll just, we'll just, I guess, maybe I misunderstood, but we'll really just focus on the carriage house issue by, kind of by itself, instead of trying to kick, capture the whole ADU, the whole aspect of the ADU citywide with regards to whether it's a carriage house or, or not? Is that, am I following that correctly? I think that's what I just heard, that we kind of, and then we'd build on it over the next few years. Aaron?
I believe we were talking about working on just these code amendments in a quick fashion. That's what I heard.
Yep, we go back to our summary. We have carriage houses. We have consolidating detailed ADU provisions as the second subheading. I think we're not dealing with maximum building and hard service coverage unless it relates to the carriage houses. I think we should talk about impact fees, whether there's a moratorium. That seems like a, something that's not, that's just money over a certain period, or, you know, pub funds for the pub, for our, you know, for our city to use to, and we have to decide whether that's something we want to spur some under these current regulations. And, and that's it as far as the section. So, we're not, although we've talked about some other things, I don't think we're getting into that now.
Okay.
And, and the impact fees may, or may not be an actual code amendment. That could be an administrative issue. You can certainly weigh in on it, but we'll, we'll, we'll need to do a little more research on, on, on a recommendation for that.
Okay, so is the commission seeing any need to kind of go through the pages? Or just, or is this just a study session where you guys have, have you guys already had a chance to say most of the stuff you wanted to say? Okay. Yeah, Aaron?
This is more of just a learning question. What exactly is the penalty for exceeding the occupation of this? Because I noticed we're putting eight people as the max. So, what happens when the ninth or 10th person moves in?
Is it?
We actually dropped it to six.
Six, sorry.
Six unrelated people. So, there's no penalty for having a huge family. But the, the, and the reason for that regulation was to avoid having large groups of people sharing the same, the same house. And especially when they, you have eight or more people, or, I mean, seven or more people all with their own cars, and that can cause some issues.
I missed the word unrelated, so, thank you.
I just wanted to confirm, so we're talking about the July 18th date, which we have tentatively scheduled for a public hearing on this. So, it would be just on the consolidation and the carriage house issues at this point.
And, and we'll bring, come back to you with some analysis on the impact fee and whether that's something that we can deal with in a, in a code amendment.
And it's clear, 18th, not 11th is in the packet, 18th is right, okay.
I made the change on the screen, so.
Okay, yeah. No, 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 yeah, okay.
And we will look into the impact fees more. I think that we'll take a code amendment. Typically, they're established by code. And they're, we're, impact fees are fairly strictly regulated at the state level. So, there are certain things we can and cannot do in terms of impact fees. So, we'll have to research that some more.
But, but I guess the packet, I thought it said that we're the only one that's charging for ADUs right now. So.
And I'm not sure we need to confirm that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We need to confirm that and understand better if other jurisdictions are charging them, how they're, how they're justifying that.
Exactly, yeah, because that affects how we calculate impact fees on other uses if they're currently part of the equation.
And I probably shouldn't say, just say justifying, but, you know, maybe they're subsidizing them in some way.
All right, did any of the commissioners have anything else to ask? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. I think we've got our, our marching orders.
Okay, great. I don't think there's any old business tonight, and a report from staff, then?
Thank you. So, I'm going to very quickly just run over the calendar that we put in front of you. I think we sent this out to you earlier. I know that it's been a few months since the commission has met. Commissioner Moreau Cook may not know that, but the rest of you do. So, the last time you met, I think it was March 21st. I came on board March 30th, and one of the first things that Dave and Bruce and I talked about was what are the items that we need to bring to the planning commission? What, what's the timeframe for that relative to the docket that the council approved back in March? And the rest of the work program that we have going on? So, what we, what we have attempted to do with this is to lay out a schedule for the rest of the year, understanding that some of these dates may change, some of the topics may change on these dates. As we get into them, they get, they tend to get a little more complicated, as you've seen tonight. So, we may have to spend a little more time on some of these. It may result in a few, more than one or two meetings as we have them laid out. What we're trying to do is at least have one or two meetings each month for the rest of the year to cover the, the main items that we have in the docket that was approved by the, by the city council. So, this is mostly for your information. We happen to answer any questions you have about any of these particular topics or the timing of those, but I'm not going to go through them in detail.
I have a question. I just, I know we have one reference here to Canyon Park. I thought we would be knee-deep into Canyon Park planning and discussions, and it seems to be kicked largely to 2019. Is that a fair assumption, or, or is council working on it and taking it and?
It's a great question, and I appreciate the question. At this point, we're not sure, Canyon Park will likely appear again before the end of the year. At this point, we're just not sure how far down the road we're going to get with that. So, right now, Bruce is working with a consultant on wrapping up the, the visioning portion of that and doing the final report on the visioning. That, I believe, we have coming back to you in July, just to give you an update on that. Then we're still scoping out the rest of the work. We have a fairly broad scope at this point, but we're also trying to figure out how to pay for that work. So, we have some funds, but they're rather minimal right now. The council has given us the direction to put, put in a budget request for the next biennium. We're hoping to start some of that work before that next budget cycle starts in January. So, long answer to your question, but I expect there will be some additional work, but, but you're right, we won't be, we won't be knee-deep in it with the planning commission, most likely, until maybe toward the end of the year. Thank you for the question, because that, that is one of our major work items, and it will be a big work item for the commission next year.
All right, and any reports from members?
Oh, there, one more report from staff there.
I'm sorry, July, okay.
So, I just wanted to report back, we, last night, we did have a study session with council on potential downtown plan, well, actually, it was, the study session was on downtown plan implementation, kind of review of where we've been and where we're at. And also a review, a little further discussion on the code amendments that they've initiated for this year. So, and we'll be bringing that back to, to Planning Commission for a study session on, on July 11th. That's why I had that date stuck in my head. The, and then on July 3rd, the council is going to have a public hearing on what we're calling the foundational affordable housing code amendments. These are code amendments that Planning Commission reviewed and made recommendation on way back in 2016, together with the Nike Hill and South Riverside proposed rezones. What we have decided to do is to separate those, those foundational code amendments from any specific rezones and get those passed first so that as we do rezones or code amendments that increase capacity enough that we can apply an affordable housing requirement, we can use that. And so, so that's what's happening on, on July 3rd, and it would be good to have a planning commissioner attend to speak to the planning commission recommendation. And I realize that I don't, probably only the three of you, I believe three of you were involved in that, or was it just two of you? Yeah, okay. And Roger was as well.
Great, so you're looking for somebody tonight to be able to speak?
Well, you can get back to me if you need to check calendars, but.
Okay.
And I can send an email to reinforce that.
Okay. Thanks, Dave, thanks, Michael, Mike. Reports from members?
I have a question. I don't know, I don't know if the bylaws memorized, but I think every couple of years, we're supposed to kind of review the, the status of, of the commission as far as, you know, Commissioner Bleed and Commissioner Cave have served as well as secretary and chair, but Commissioner Clark is gone now, and he was the vice chair. So, what is the process for that?
That's a great question, and I don't have the bylaws memorized either. But I believe that was an unintended consequence of skipping the April and May meetings. That's typically when the elections of new officers happens. So, we should address that, and so we'll, we'll.
Put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? First, thanks to Arch for, I took that tour for the Affordable Housing Tour in Bellevue. That was fantastic. That was really, really neat. I was thankful to have the opportunity to do that. It's neat to see what the other cities are doing with regards to increasing the capacity for affordable housing. And then, sorry for missing this, but introducing Aaron Moreau Cook, because this is his first meeting with us. Do you have anything to say, Aaron, to?
I'm just happy to be here, thank you.
Okay, we're happy to have you. All right, with that, it doesn't look like anybody has, is, is there a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.